Good morning, everyone. I would like to call to order the regular board meeting of Tuesday, January 28th, 2025. As is our custom, we begin our board meetings with the singing of our national anthem. We're very honoured today to have a pre-recorded video of grade one students from Crossing Park School singing O Canada. I would ask everyone to please stand and follow the lead of the students. Well, that can't help but put a smile on everyone's face. We're also very pleased today to have a video featuring students from Crossing Park School give the acknowledgement of the land.
The Calgary Board of Education acknowledges the traditional territories and oral practices of the Treaty VII Nation, including the Six-Six-Gutspai, the Gai-Nai, the Pigani, the Amskapie-Pigani Nations. We acknowledge the Sutena Nation, Ayari Nakota comprised of the Chidniki, Berespa, and Good Stony Nations, the Meti Nation within Alberta, and all people who make their homes in the Treaty VII region of southern Alberta.
The land on which we gathered traditionally known as the Moginstis, Blackfoot, Gusisse, Sutena, and Winchispah, Nakota, and O Tuskoni, Northern Mischief and Cree.
As a learning organisation, we are committed to advancing the truth and reconciliation calls to action, focused on education for reconciliation.
Trustee Dennis is trustee for wards five and 10. Would you like to say a few words of thanks for O Canada and the land acknowledgement?
Happy to do so. Please share with the students, thank you so much. O Canada, I've never seen so many smiles out in the gallery as we saw today and also with my colleagues sitting next to me. Impressive how whoever was leading them was trying to keep the tempo steady because they were so excited. You could tell they just wanted to sing so fast. But love of the sustained V at the end too. As a musician, I appreciate those things, but that was really fun. So thank you so much for that. And also to the students who did the land acknowledgement. It's a lot of work to master those pronunciations. As trustees, we've done a little bit of learning on that ourselves. And so really impressive that they've worked hard to nail down those pronunciations the way they did. So please pass along the gratitude from the Board of Trustees to all of those folks when you head back home.
Thank you, trustee Dennis. Oki, darinastada, ambawastich, tansay, tanishi, bonjour, hello, and welcome to all of our staff and public in attendance at this meeting. Representing our stakeholder groups, I would like to recognise Clay Gordon from the Canadian Union of Public Employees Local 40. Our first item in business is to approve the agenda for today's meeting. Ms Miner, do you have any changes that need to be noted?
Madam Chair, the following agenda change requests have been received. That item 9.1.2 Meeting Minutes be removed from today's agenda entirely. And that item 9.2.1 First Quarter Budget Variance Report be removed from the consent agenda and added as item 7.1 under Matters Reserved for Board Information.
Could I have a motion that the agenda be approved with the proposed changes? Thank you, trustee Close. Those in favour of the motion? That is carried unanimously. Today, we have a school presentation from Crossing Park School. Director Nautigal, would you please introduce the presentation?
Good morning, trustees, superintendents, and guests. My name is Lisa Nautigal and I am one of the education directors for Area Four. I am excited to be here today to introduce Andrew Buse, Principal of Crossing Park School. Crossing Park School is situated within the boundary of Ward 10, represented by trustee Marilyn Dennis. Maybe just looking for the presentation to be up on the screen, please. Thank you. The school is nestled in the community of Martindale and serves 1,073 kindergarten to grade nine students, 797 English as an additional language learners, 23 students who self-identify as Indigenous, and 103 students with identified special education needs. Today's presentation is a celebration of oral language instruction and student achievement with a special emphasis on high-impact instructional strategies, structures, and processes, and the leadership actions taken to create a positive school learning culture. This is directly linked to the interpretation of R2 that students will be literate, meaning the ability to acquire, create, connect, and communicate meaning through language, images, and written text. Furthermore, the work that will be presented is one example of our larger system of how schools work every day to meet our mission. Each student, in keeping with their individual abilities and gifts, will complete high school with a foundation of learning necessary to thrive in life, work, and continued learning. I am very pleased now to pass it over to Principal Buse.
Thank you, Lisa. Having worked as an educator in seven different settings and a number of educational leadership roles, it became abundantly clear to me by the time I took the role as a principal at Crossing Park School that students, parents, directors, teachers, support staff, and indeed trustees fundamentally want three things, and that's for students to be safe, happy, and learning at school. And this mantra is grounded in our collective priorities as a community and aligns very neatly with the CBE Three-Year Education Plan. Our school development plan... Pardon me, I forgot to flip the slide here. Our school development plan work focuses on oral language, as Lisa mentioned, task design and assessment being at the centre of this. This has had a significant impact on student achievement, which I'd like to share with you today. In terms of resources, Crossing Park is indeed a large K-9 setting, boasting a diverse community and a growing immigrant and refugee population. This presents some challenges, but also some great opportunities for the community we serve. By grounding task design and assessment in the principles of the CBE Literacy and Numeracy Frameworks, we've been able to advance our two results to academic success. We've drawn on data from classroom observations, teacher feedback, input around professional learning, assessment calibration from professional learning communities. And we've also paid close attention to student voice from anonymous surveys to street data, where we focused on groups of students whose voices may not otherwise be heard. It became very evident by linking all these data points together that there was a need to advance a balanced body of evidence in our assessment practice. This is the basis for a fair and transparent assessment practice. So how do we lead this? In terms of leadership, by intentionally developing a shared leadership structure in a school, particularly a size of ours, is indeed very important. We need to have a culture that's based on building staff capacity, which can in turn grow student... translate into student growth, which in turn translates into student progress, growth, and achievement. We've created a positive change over a community by leveraging this philosophy. First, let's talk about the why. It was vital for our staff to unpack the data as a collective and to go over professional expectations. As delineated on the slide, you can see the LQS, the Leadership Quality Standard from Alberta, as well as the Teacher Quality Standard. These specifically include sections on both competency around providing instructional leadership, demonstrating a professional body of knowledge, as outlined in the TQS as well. Secondly, let's focus on the how. We focused on task design and assessment practices as a launchpad to further influence this practice. We committed a substantial amount of professional learning time around assessment with a focus on fair, transparent, and equitable practices. Notably, these were guided by the CBE Literacy Framework. Thirdly, let's consider accountability and how we maintain the momentum. Developing supportive ways to supervise and evaluate teacher growth and progress is critical. As a community, we developed a clear and concise tools to hold professionals capable and to monitor their growth to gather ongoing evidence, which in turn would support student growth and achievement. To effectively assess oral language development, we also paid close attention to local-based measures around speaking and listening. This slide indicates and illustrates an exemplar that we co-created as a K-9 community, which is used across disciplines and subject areas to support transparency, equity, and advancing achievement. This community-wide rubric is especially important in a school which is comprised of 75% EAL learners. And the research is really clear. We know that when students are successful with early literacy and EAL programming that's predicated on building oral language, it serves as the bedrock for other forms of communication, including written communication. So our specific strategy in taking this up, I'd like to talk about Talk Moves for a moment. This is an important approach that we've embraced and refined, and I will highlight a little bit further in the presentation. Talk Moves leverages structured oral language frameworks. These are tailored to meet students at different points entering the work. And it helps teachers effectively programme for clear, concise, informative, relevant discussions between students. After all, they learn in the company of peers. It also supports focus on a balanced body of evidence. This evidence has informed assessment and been instrumental in boosting achievement. Where is this boost? Well, it's been noted through our highly calibrated report cards. In the K-6 English Language Arts Literature STEM makes meaning and connections through oral language, as well as the Grade 7 to 9 English Language Arts STEM constructs meaning and makes connections through speaking. We've seen a steady uptick. In terms of look-for's and instructional observations and classroom observations, our leadership work increasingly takes the form of monitoring supporting oral language programming, specifically quality programming. We drew on input from our Area Four colleagues, school leadership team, teachers and support staff, and helped to align a laser-focused look-for document, as you see on this slide. Armed with this more laser-focused tool, it's made the practice of observing classrooms much more consistent. And we've been able to see a greater uptake in teachers adopting and effectively programming with a specific focus on Talk Moves and the elements that make up a quality programming around it. Teacher survey data, interestingly, indicated a greater confidence in oral language assessment. And data also point to greater efficiency and accuracy in assessment practices, as well as greater academic achievement. So this video features some examples from staff and students, as well as staff from the other CBE departments who speak to the benefits of programming with oral language strategies, specifically Talk Moves.
So as an EAL strategist, I work alongside teachers with a gradual release model, as I do, we do, you do, knowing that Crossing Park School Development Plan is based on oral language.
I've seen how structured oral communication helps all students demonstrate understanding and rationale and show their learning in deeper ways.
We have been engaging in a variety of oral practice, oral speaking tasks. I am actively using the CBE's Indigenous Holistic Lifelong Learning Framework. I am particularly focusing on the Body-to-Do domain of this framework.
Our focus on speaking and listening also supports our TRC commitment to intercultural understanding, empathy, and mutual respect.
In this domain, I am allowing students to have an active role in their decision-making and deepen their understanding through conversation. One way that I do this is through scaffolded oral techniques such as Talk Moves, Think Pair Share, or just open opportunities where students can use sentence structures to have a more fluid conversation with one another.
Using Talk Moves in my classroom has definitely improved the level of engagement in the academic conversation that's happening amongst my students.
It also improves our communication skills, which are key for working with people from all walks of life.
Oral communication is a life skill, one that we will rely on in every stage of life, whether it's lending a job, or working with a team, or even just communicating with other people.
In my class, we have been using daily conversations where students are given a question or a topic to talk about, so they have the time to think to themselves about what they want to say using the sentence frames that have been given to them.
Gathering assessment this way allows us to meet students' needs and has supported their confidence and achievement levels positively.
By prioritising student voice and fostering a culture of shared learning, we support academic achievement while promoting a strong sense of student wellbeing.
I feel safe and happy in my learning because our teacher sometimes she pulls kids into the back of the table and she helps them if they weren't here or they don't know what to do. And sometimes she writes down a sentence studies on the board to help us learn.
I feel happy in social studies because my teacher helps me and she gives me a chart. She gives me pictures and she lets me time to talk to my peers and give me a chance when I raise my hand and help other kids in Class Two in Social Studies when they need help.
Again, this... Let's focus on the achievement for a minute. As we're all aware, the system is very much focused on improving achievement in a number of areas, with a particular focus being on English Language Arts and Literature, as well as Mathematics. Use of Talk Moves has provided a well-rounded strategy to accurately gauge achievement. Students are provided with a supportive framework, as mentioned in the video, to provide well-reasoned and insightful responses. These are associated with higher achievement levels. While we witness growth at all division levels, there are a couple of key report card data points to be highlighted. This is delineated on this particular slide. We can see a 19% increase in higher achievement levels for Division One students after successful implementation of Talk Moves. Another key data point showed double-digit improvements in achievement. As highlighted by the assessment of the Division Two Math Report Card STEM uses mathematical reasoning to analyse and solve problems. Let me also touch on confidence, because we know that when students are confident, they achieve more. Our students pointed to confidence in verbal expression as a considerable gap in their collective wellbeing. This is an area we're actively addressing as part of our plan. Our focus on transparent, fair, and equitable programming and assessment of speaking and listening has translated to significant progress on this front. This was indicated on student surveys spanning from K to nine. In our middle-year survey, which we can see on the screen, we can see that roughly 70% of students suggested that they had become more confident in verbally expressing their understanding and knowledge. This helped not only their academic achievement, but wellbeing at the same time. We've drawn on an array of... Excuse me. We've drawn on an array of resources from across our system. After all, we're all CBE. These live in common anchor charts throughout our school, helping to reinforce a common vision and through-line. Professional learning opportunities consistently revisit how our work is grounded in CBE frameworks, as some of the teachers referenced in the video. Our approach has paid particular attention to Section Six of the Mathematics Framework, facilitating meaningful mathematical discourse. In other words, how teachers are facilitating frames to help students explain and defend math approaches. In the Literacy Framework, we focused on Section Three, Literacy and Teaching Practices, which focuses on oral language development. In terms of actioning the CBE Indigenous Education Holistic Lifelong Learning Framework, the domain around the Body-to-Do, as mentioned in the video, aligns with our student wellbeing goals and structures and processes. These support high expectations for learners and staff alike. These diverse dimensions are also grounded in the continuum of supports outlined in the Student Wellbeing Framework. This includes confidence in learning, which also translates, as I mentioned, into academic achievement. In terms of our next steps, I think it's really important that I underscore that a shared leadership approach isn't only a nice-to-have, it's a necessity. If we're going to move this work forward, it takes a team. We started this journey of building capacity based on these frameworks, a teacher growth model, and monitoring progress with a laser-focused look-for document. As we've seen, this leads to positive practice in student achievement, which generates even more positive momentum. It's very similar to when Hattie suggests, "Practice changes beliefs." Our next steps include celebrating the success to underscore the clear link between our collective actions on fair, equitable, and transparent assessment and student achievement. These are essential elements in a safe, happy learning community.
Trustee Dennis, would you like to say a few words of thanks to Crossing Park School for the presentation today?
It is my pleasure to do so. As always, super proud to be your trustee and thank you so much for the presentation today. Certainly want to acknowledge education director Lisa Nautigal, also Principal Andrew Buse, and the students who participated in the video today, in particular Aisha, Ishraj, Iman, and Serene. So thank you so much for your participation in that video today, too. I understand you're going to share this with them when you get back to the community, so please pass along our gratitude to all of the staff and the students that participated in getting this presentation ready for the Board of Trustees today. Couple of things I guess I would highlight in particular is throughout the presentation, I also saw the priorities of the Board of Trustees reflected in the work that you're doing at Crossing Park School. Academic success, equity, and wellbeing are priorities of the Board, and we're seeing that in action at your school. A few things. Assessment calibration matters. Having it be robust, fair, and equitable, and we're seeing that. Clear communication matters when you want to advance academic success and promote student wellbeing. We see that demonstrated there. And high expectations for staff and students also matters because it does promote growth for everyone. And we know that all students are capable when they are met where they are at. Love the comments around student voice and how you're seeing that increased confidence in your students and also giving them the opportunity to impact their learning and having a meaningful impact on their environment and having voice in their environment. So thank you so much again for the presentation. Excited to see the work that's happening there. You have every reason to celebrate, and we celebrate along with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, trustee Dennis. And we will now take a five-minute recess. All right, we will now reconvene. Next to our agenda is the continued annual monitoring of Results to Academic Success. At the January 14th Public Board Meeting, the Board received a presentation and asked questions on indicators one, two, and three contained in the report. Today's presentation and questions will focus on indicators four and five. Chief Pittman, would you please introduce the report?
Thank you, Chair Bolger and trustees. As already highlighted, we're looking forward to discussing Results to Academic Success indicators four and five and respond to further questions you might have. However, before we begin, I want to go back a bit to some of what we talked about in our last board meeting on indicators one to three. That also relates to indicators four and five and is important, I believe, for the Board. We highlighted many areas of celebration in terms of CBE student academic results, as well as the important work that we do have ahead of us. You heard some of that work highlighted in today's presentation. One significant story of success to highlight is the CBE High School completion rates, and we discussed that earlier. And as previously shared, our five-year completion rate has shown an improvement over the previous three-year average. It exceeds the provincial results. And unlike the overall provincial results, it has improved over the previous year's results. These three, four, and five-year cohorts were defined back in school years between 2018-19 and 2020-21 during the pandemic, marked by both disruptions to learning and restrictions on social and physical interaction. This level of achievement is a direct result of our focus on ensuring that our students have the time, space, and opportunity for programming necessary to complete high school in three, four, or five years. And it is a testament to the perseverance, dedication, and resilience of CBE students and staff. The story, though, is where I really want to go because it becomes even more notable in that during this time, when these cohorts of students were working towards completion, CBE saw unprecedented levels of growth in the numbers of EAL students at initial stages of English language acquisition. In 2018, when these cohorts were first identified and defined for the statistics you saw, the total number of EAL students in grades 10 through 12 at a language proficiency level of one, two, and three, meaning they were pre-just learning English. So accessing academic language required for high school courses would require significant work. The number of students was 620. By the end of this reporting period in 2022, that number had grown to 2,352. And as of the end of December 2024, that number now stands at 3,821, a growth of over 510% increase in students who, while not reflected statistically in that cohort, are part of our collective work and also reflected in the diploma examination results that you are seeing before you today. This additional context to the CBE success story is important for two reasons. First, while this group may not have been part of the initial cohort, when it was established, our high schools needed to ensure that all students were receiving the same time, space, and opportunity to complete high school. With increased demands and pressures, schools were hard-pressed to continue to provide these resources. Yet, CBE completion rates remain equal to or higher than the provincial average overall. And it again speaks to the ongoing success that I wish to highlight of the work of our staff. Secondly, this group of learners is now being included in completion rate cohorts, which we'll be measuring over the next several years. Knowing this, we can expect to see a pattern of students requiring more than three years to complete high school. And with this in mind, we'll work within our resources to build the structures and supports necessary to provide time, space, and the opportunity for programming for all learners to gain the needed skills to complete high school. So as we look at the story behind CBE's notable five-year completion rate, both the past context and the blueprint it provides for future action, I see an organisation committed to its central mission as directed by the Board. All students in keeping with their individual abilities and gifts will complete high school with a foundation of learning necessary to thrive in life, work, and continued learning. will complete high school with a foundation of learning necessary to thrive in life, work, and continued learning. As we discuss PATs, diploma exams, and the range of programming offered to students, whether they are in high school or leading up to high school, all of these pieces work together to reflect our continued commitment and action to result in improvement for our students based on where they are at. At this time, I welcome any questions trustees have.
Thank you, Chief Pittman. I now invite any trustee who has questions about this monitoring report to offer them to the Chief Superintendent. I encourage you to limit your questions to those that will assist the Board to make decisions regarding whether reasonable progress has been made to the ultimate achievement of this results policy. I remind trustees that the emphasis for monitoring results is not on compliance, but rather on reasonable progress. Trustee Dennis?
Thank you so much, Chair. Thank you so much to Superintendent Pittman for your opening remarks. I feel like you read my mind because my questions are all about some of those open ring remarks. Appreciated the information that you provided in, you know, total numbers of students that are sort of sitting in that language proficiency level of one to three. I wonder if you could drill down a little bit more in terms of, you know, individual, you know, one, two, and three, roughly how many students we have in each of those groupings? And seeing obviously significant growth in those numbers of students, and wondering just, you know, we know that it's a language proficiency level in English. We know that they may actually be proficient in more than one other language. So we're talking about English here specifically, and they do need the English language to be able to succeed academically here. So I'm just wondering a little bit about, I guess, specific numbers, but also just the impact generally on results and resourcing, you know, now and kind of moving forward.
Through the chair. So from 2022 to 2023, to the 2023 to 2024 school year, the CBE saw year-over-year increase of 6,779 students who are an EAL learner. And this related to an overall increase or a total population of EAL students of 40,800, approximately, I think we're about 143,000 students today. The number of students across Division One with LP One stayed similar year-over-year. However, we've seen an increase in more students with LP One and LP Two in Divisions Three and Four year-over-year. So we're seeing more students with a lower LP level at higher grades. That makes sense. So for example, in 2023-2024 school year compared to the previous year, we saw an increase of 210 students in Division Three, so the more middle school, with an LP Two level, and an increase of 55 students with an LP Two level in Division Four, for a total of 2,654 students with an LP One to Three in Division, just Division Four. We are seeing an increase in the total number of EAL students and an increase year-over-year in the number of students at each LP level. The overall trend is that EAL numbers are increasing. I would say that the more significant change in our system regarding EAL data, which would parallel to what the chief shared regarding high school, is if we go back to 2021-2022, so coming out of the pandemic and the increased level of immigration to Canada. At that time, we had 13,550 students that were EAL. That would have had a learning proficiency of one to three. And currently, today, we have 26,338 students who have an LP level of one to three. So 13,500 to 26,300, not quite a doubling, but pretty darn close. And this parallels a time with significant growth in our system, and I think we've talked about this at other meetings. So your question says the anticipated impact. So we have increased demands in our classroom, that would seem unnatural, meaning more students who may need language acquisition supports. Our academic results continue to be strong. However, we have shared through opening remarks at our last board meeting and today and through other meetings that we do anticipate more students needing longer and more time, specifically EAA students, and sometimes we also, EAL students, sometimes we also see that for special education students, especially when they enter the system later on their education journey. I do also think it's really important to highlight that we do have, as Superintendent, excuse me, Chief Superintendent Pittman shared, we do have structures in our schools with EAL supports, our key teachers, as we increase professional learning and supports at the schools within the limited resources and budget that we have.
Trustee Bukidinovich?
Not a question, but just a comment when I listened to the preamble and then this response. When I hear that we have an increasing number of EAL students who are coming to high school at the initial stage of acquisition and that we will have an increase in the number of students who require more than three years to complete high school, it really drives home for me the need for an increase in Alberta of $1 billion to K-12 education funding at current enrollment levels. This is just an absolute necessity, and I hope Albertans are listening, I hope Calgarians are listening. This is a desperate need we have right now in Alberta to have an increase of $1 billion to K-12 funding.
Trustee Dennis?
Thank you, Chair. Context matters so much when we're looking at reasonable progress, so I really appreciate the information that you're providing. I'm a little bit curious also about transitions. So we're seeing so many new students coming to Calgary and into the Calgary Board of Education. You know, these families are needing to settle, find housing. Wondering a bit, I guess, about what you can say in this monitoring year around the impact of transitions on student success? And if there is a typical, and I don't know if there is a typical necessarily, but, you know, how many transitions are some of these families seeing before they really, you know, land into their homeschool? I'll be good at that for now.
Through the chair. So over the past three years, as you're suggesting, a significant percentage of newcomer students have come through the CBE's Welcome Center and have enrolled in CBE schools. This group is approximately 16,500 students, and almost actually 66% of them have stayed at the same school. And when we include just one transition, the number actually jumps to just over 92%. And bear in mind, that transition could be deciding to go to an alternative program or could actually be them moving to their middle school from elementary or to high school. So those would be natural experiences. This does speak actually to the foundational work and the investment we have made in our Welcome Center to both have CBE staff and other resources that actually we do set students up with a trajectory to have minimal transitions. However, percentages don't always tell the total story because we're talking about such a large number of students. I would share with you that in that time, 1,250 students did have a minimum of three transitions. But they could have also been going from middle school to high school. In regard to how long does it take to settle? This is really highly dependent on the student and the school environment. We know that our families are often supported through the Welcome Center and through other agencies that support us in this collective work. And we also know that our schools work diligently to set students up with their peers and the teaching staff as well. I hope that helps answer that question.
Trustee Hack?
So you're going to have to bear with me. I just want to go back to the opening remarks a little bit. Absolutely area of celebration, the high school completion five-year rates. I noticed we're talking about ensure that students have the time, space, and opportunities to complete high school, but I also heard that we need to work within our resources. I'm going to ask, how does this impact all of our students' learning, especially those year four, year five students who want to attend their local high school to finish? And do we risk, do we run the risk of running out of space at those high schools? What, if you could just unpack that a little bit for me, how does it look now? Or, you know, crystal ball, looking into the future?
Through the chair. Historically, CBE high schools have worked within their communities and also within Schnook Learning Services and CBE Learn as parts of those packages of programming to support students to complete high school that go beyond three years. And in some high schools, it is easy to facilitate additional years and access to courses on-site. The reality is, I believe the Board is very well aware, of the over 100% utilization rate at the vast majority of our high schools has a direct impact on our ability to continue to provide those services in the way that we might like in the community connected to staff who know the students. And within that, we continue to make careful and strategic choices to maximize the programs we have available through Schnook Learning Services, through CBE Learn, and alongside schools where possible onsite to allow for that. The reality is, in the absence of space at the high school level, to continue to provide access to all of those programming options that students need, it is going to be challenging. We are not sitting passively in that we continue to look at other programming opportunities and partnerships that we might explore as we know that there's an important network of supports. And so as administration works, continues to look forward in how it is we provide those services in year four and five, it's not always looking solely at leveraging our own resources. We must be creative and thoughtful, but we are committed to ensuring that when students are known in their community, it is our intention to keep them there, to allow them to experience that success, and to make sure that as an organization, all resources we have are driven to that completion so that our students can be productive members of either the post-secondary world or directly into the economy.
Trustee Dennis?
Thank you so much. I'm a little curious, I guess, about the impacts of COVID-19 and the pandemic. And so when we look at this monitoring year, assuming, you know, students typically would finish high school in three years, we're looking at a group of grade nine students here who are significantly most directly impacted by the pandemic here. So truth be told, I didn't go back through and do a word count on the last two, or two reports, but my impression in reading it was I felt like I just wasn't hearing about or seeing COVID-19 or the pandemic mentioned quite as much. And so my impression is that it's just not being mentioned as heavily as it was otherwise. But again, confession, didn't do the word count. I'm wondering if, does this, is my impression correct? Does this mean that we feel as though we are, you know, making our way through, mitigating the impacts of the pandemic? And in particular, I'm thinking about, you know, sort of our middle school kids because all students, most of the students in the system now are impacted in different ways. But I'm wondering if we're going to see the impact or we feel like we've done a good job of mitigating the impact of COVID, that we're going to see less of an impact on students moving forward? And also, you know, on our younger students, is it easier to sort of recover from an interruption like that than it would have been for, you know, students that would have potentially graduated last year or who were in grade nine in 2020-21?
Through the chair. You are correct that we are not spending as much time perhaps as immediately after the pandemic, speaking specifically to the impacts of COVID-19. We recognize at this time that this cohort of students has multiple factors that can impact their student success. And this is really difficult to empirically say, was this strictly because of the pandemic and/or were there other variables that impacted the academic outcomes for this group of students? We know that the cohort has changed significantly, that there have been assessment variabilities during this period of time, and that there have been curriculum transitions over this time as well. All of those things and the changing dynamics for these students may have had an impact on those things. So some of the things that we're doing to really focus our attention on is looking at professional learning, for example, at the middle school level where we know that those are, that is an area where we really want to focus in on and that the data tells us that. And so we're emphasizing really knowing and learning about our learners. What are their strengths? What is their areas of need? We're monitoring growth and using targeted interventions in a rapid cycle of assessment, screening, review, and intervention. That this work provides both academic and social-emotional well-being support for our learners and that we're really looking to mitigate all of these variables that potentially impact academic outcomes. Now, you had one question about the early-years learners, and I would just offer that we're using those very same targeted interventions and strategies at that level and that as they are learning their foundational skills, that those potential legs in learning are smaller. And as a result, that targeted intervention can close those gaps in a faster way than we're experiencing at middle or high school. But the strategies are still highly effective across the room. Thank you.
Trustee Hack?
Thank you. So looking overall, understanding our context of massively changing population, incredible growth, and extreme lack of space, I do see how well-savvy students are doing as it relates to the all-students cohort in indicator four, all those subjects that are listed. So I'm looking on page 50, 51 there. Does administration note any concern or change of action that may be taken because of the grades listed there? Or what we are seeing, is that a regular variation depending on the cohort going through?
Thank you through the chair. So you are correct, there is a slight variation and results are expected, and this is just reflective of the natural differences between cohorts of students. And so more specifically, when we look at the 2023-24 results, which this report is based on, in Divisions One to Three, there was no statistically significant changes in report card marks. At Division Four, while the results experienced in a few places, more notable variations, the only statistically significant change were observed in CTS, or Career Technology Studies and Science. And even those, when you look at the trend, sorry, over the years, the students are still doing very well. That said, administration does continue to adjust our actions. So I'd highlight three. Although I shared with you no statistical differences in Div One, Div Three, we do have new curriculum in kindergarten to grade six in certain areas. So that is an area of a focus to support teachers, and there can always be adjustments, and that will be an important piece to consider as we move into the future. As other questions have highlighted, there's increased complexity in our schools. So addressing the needs of a growing diverse student population and the rise of English as additional language leaders is a specific targeted area of administration. We've also continued to monitor our data and to look at ways of improving academic achievement where we need more support. And in our last board meeting, and I'm sure will come up again today, is that middle school continues to be a focus, and that was data that we've seen in the past. And that is why it has an important focus in our education plan as well.
And I might just jump in here since you were speaking of middle school in relation to indicator four in pages 79, 85, and 96. So some of the academic results of our middle school students are maybe not quite as strong as we would like to see. And so for those students with a lower report card in grade nine, I assume, and I guess I just want to know if it's correct, that it would be recommended as a register for grade 10 to perhaps consider dash two or three classes when entering high school? And so I guess first, is that accurate?
So ultimately, parents and students decide which course and which stream that they would be working with. They'll work with their school, who would make recommendations, and there is an opportunity for them to register in that dash three, dash two, or they can choose, if they have the supports and the scaffolding in place, to register for dash one.
Okay, thank you, and I'll just follow up. So my second question is then, so our dash two and three results in ELA and math would appear to have declined on page 31. So how do we address this outcome? So how do we address this outcome when we potentially have more students entering the dash two and three so that they experience greater success and then, than they made in the dash one class?
Thank you through the chair. And what is, you have identified that there was a slight decline in the 2023, 2024 year for those, those courses. And what is provided in terms of support are targeted interventions. And so making sure that we really have that understanding of the learner, what are their assessed areas of need? What are the instructional strategies that match that area of need? And then ensuring that we're able to regularly engage in ongoing formative assessment and feedback for that student and family so that they're aware of that. We provide our teachers with professional learning to ensure that they're understanding how to best meet those, in those areas of need, both instructional and assessment practices. And we also offer flexible pathways in programming so that where students are gaining their skills, their foundational skills, perhaps in the dash three, that they're able to move through and at a level that will meet their, their individual need. And so that flexible programming is an important alternative for those students as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustees, any more questions? Trustee Hack?
Hi, you mentioned the CTS portion. I've got, just wanna dig a little bit into that. Can you walk me through how a middle school student for CTF or high school student for CTS? How are these courses taken by students? So who, who makes those decisions? I'm assuming students are choosing these. But would there be cases where students are denied entry to these courses? In, in certain situations, woodworking, mechanics, due to any safety concerns or any other reason? I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, I see a decline. I'm wondering who the cohorts are who are taking these courses, and I might have a follow-up. Thank you.
Through the chair. So in regards to how they enter those classes, so CTS, Career Technology Studies, and CTF, Career Technology Foundations, and the CTF usually in, not usually is in middle school, and it's explorer, exploration opportunities. And you are correct that the students get to have a voice in the courses that they choose. And those courses, or the classes that they take are dependent on the resources at the school, the interests of the students, and the expertise at, of the teachers. And then Career Technology Studies, which would start student gaining credits, is more focused on, again, exploratory, but maybe future career opportunities and pathways. And that could range from technology trades, you highlighted some of those in your question. And they're based on three to five credits, depending on if they're one term or a full semester. And then students can build on. So the student might take mechanics in grade 10 and take that and get 15 credits in mechanics. And we've talked about other opportunities within the CBE. In regards to your question around the availability of students or student safety, of course, student safety is utmost importance. And the supports for a student in their core classes are most often available in the complementary courses as well. So they potentially could have an education assistant and support. If there is a case, and sometimes there may be, where a student may not have the capability, or there could be a safety question, then the school works with that student and their parents. And when we compare year over year, there really isn't a lot of difference in our enrollment in those courses.
Trustee Bukidinovich?
Yes, thank you. On page 67 of 135, I read that CBE high school students consistently had higher diploma examination results in 2023, 24 compared to the provincial results in quite a few subject areas. So in French Language Arts, in Social Studies, and all science areas. And I also read that the positive gaps were most noticeable at the standard of excellence for Biology 30 and Chemistry 30 and Physics 30. And where in each of those areas, the gaps were more than 11 percentage points higher for CBE students than the province, which is amazing. It's lovely news to, to talk about today, which is first day of semester two for many high school students. I don't know if it's for all or just most or some, but it's an exciting day for many high school students today. So it's wonderful to hear that we're having wonderful, achieving wonderful results. So I'm wondering, what have we done so far? And what more will we do to share this great news with parents to increase their awareness that CBE students are outperforming their peers across Alberta? And to make parents aware that they can have full confidence that a CBE education is a world-class education?
Through the chair. So these results were also highlighted in our annual education results report. And we've published news stories relative to those and provided in public other presentations. I think always reflecting on the quality of public education, not only in regards to achievement, but also choice, that those elements, I see trustees working hard to ensure that families and school councils are aware. We would also have our principals sharing their school results and sharing that back within the community and during open houses as well, which we're in open house season currently, where the results and the work of the school is always an important part of highlighting the possibilities of students as they move into any of our high schools and into any of our specific programs, as you highlighted, French Language Arts as an example for diploma exams. I would comment, separate and apart from your question, that as we continue to look at what constitutes high school completion in a way that serves the future of our province, our country, more globally, that you can see a trend of choice and range of pathways. And that's both a benefit and sometimes a challenge to an organization to really think about where we invest in a way that's responsive to who our students are. And to trustee Hack's earlier question around CTS and enrollment in those courses, and if we see declines in achievement, we're seeking to create as great as possible accessibility to as much choice for students so that they have agency in their future. And that will be something at a system level, we will continue to need to monitor to ensure that we are meeting what our mandate is. And those are the elements that we remain committed to. And through this results to monitoring report, the board demonstrates its commitment to ensure administration is following the priorities and the values as expressed by the Board of Trustees.
Trustees, any additional questions on R2? Seeing none, any trustees who wish to bring forward a motion regarding exception or commendation should provide the motions to the Corporate Secretary and to all trustees by noon, Thursday, February 6, 2025. This item will be placed on the February 11, 2025 agenda for the board's consideration. Next on our agenda is item 7.1, First Quarter Budget Variance Report. Chief Superintendent Pittman, would you please introduce the report?
Thank you, Chair Bolger. I'm going to hand it directly over to our Chief Financial Officer, Superintendent Brad Grundy.
Thank you, Chair Pittman, and through the chair to trustees. Presented for your information is the First Quarter Budget Variance Report for the 2024, 25 school year. As the name implies, this First Quarter Budget Variance Report details material changes or variances that occur between the end of May, when the budget was approved, and the anticipated expenditures for the year based on information available to us as of the end of November 2024. This report is required under Operational Expectation 5 Financial Planning and is part of the CBE administration's accountability to you as governors of the CBE, to the public, and to Alberta Education as our funders. Trustees will recall that the Board of Trustees approved the budget for the upcoming school year, or for the current school year in May, as required under the Education Act. With the commencement of the school year, CBE administration provides quarterly budget variance reports that identify variances between the budget that was approved in May and the actual and forecast expenditures for the remainder of the fiscal year. The quarterly budget variance report set out any variances of more than 1% and $500,000 in revenues and expenditures. In addition, the Board of Trustees approves the annual financial statements prepared by CBE administration and audited by the Board of Trustees' independent external auditors. It is also important to note that while the budget for the school year is approved in May, the CBE, the CBE's year concludes at the end of August. As a result, the CBE is not able to incorporate information from the year-end into that May budget. Accordingly, the First Quarter Budget Variance Report is the first opportunity CBE administration has to incorporate year-end information into the CBE's financial forecast. As a general rule, the most significant information from the audited financial statements relates to operating and capital carryforward amounts. More on that in a bit. Turning to the report before you, the single biggest event was the $31.7 million in increased funding resulting from a provincial government announcement in August. This additional funding was provided to address the need for increased school-based staffing in the face of robust enrollment growth. The funding was also directed at other operational pressures in a nod to the ongoing impact of inflation on school district operations. This funding was greatly appreciated by the CBE. The CBE used those additional funds to hire additional school-based staff, enhance existing programs and services for students, fund efforts to create additional learning spaces in our schools, address emerging inflationary cost pressures, and fund the small deficit of $2.5 million that the board approved with the budget back in May. Based on all of the changes that have occurred between the approval of the budget and then the November year-end, the CBE is currently forecasting a modest $3.5 million surplus for the year ending August 31, 2025. That surplus is approximately 2/10 of 1% of the CBE's total expenditures and well within our operating tolerance. Another significant event was the slight easing in the rate of enrollment growth. Growth was initially expected to slightly exceed 9,000 students for the current school year. Based on the September 30 enrollment count, that growth was just over 4,100 students. Changes to federal and provincial immigration policies and affordability issues in Calgary were doubtless factors in this shift in enrollment. So while growth remains healthy at just over 4,100 students, the CBE is required to return approximately $35 million in funding associated with the students who did not materialize in this school year when counted on September 30. CBE administration has made provisions for the return of those funds as part of the 2025, 26 budget cycle. Having said that, the CBE also grew by approximately 890 students since September 30. Those students do not attract additional funding from Alberta Education and must be funded from the CBE's base budget. Accommodating these students in CBE schools necessitated an investment of slightly more than $6 million. The CBE had made provision for this in-year growth by holding some funds in the centrally administered Criteria-Based Response Fund. The Criteria-Based Response Fund is used to address pressures where a school may have received a significant number of in-year grow students. Schools receiving a smaller number of in-year students are generally able to accommodate those students within their existing RAM funding. You will also see reference to several carryforward amounts throughout the Budget Variance Report. These are amounts, these are amounts for in-progress projects that did not complete as planned in 2023, 24. In this report, there is $16.1 million in operating carryforwards and $27.8 million in capital carryforwards. Funds that were budgeted for those projects in 2023, 24 were carried forward into the 24, 25 school year, and that was reflected in our audited financial statements. Mechanically, the carryforward of funding from one year to the next occurs through the CBE's unrestricted surplus account, which is detailed in Schedule I, Net Assets, to the audited financial statements. With the start of the current school year, these carryforward amounts are then removed from the unrestricted surplus to fund the completion of the related projects and their expenditures. Given the inherent variability of carryforward balances, they are not included in the CBE's budget. Rather, as stated, they are reflected in Schedule I, Net Assets, to the audited financial statements and the First Quarter Budget Variance Report for the following year, so the report before you today. Putting it all together, this Budget Variance Report reflects a well-managed public school district that is committed to meeting the needs of all students within the funding allocated to it by Alberta Education. The forecast modest surplus of $3.5 million provides the CBE with additional fiscal flexibility as the year progresses. This report also shows the very dynamic nature of public education in Alberta. Enrollment continues to shift and change. Funding from Alberta Education continues to evolve in response to emerging issues and challenges. The CBE continues to address capacity issues across the system while planning for new learning spaces. The CBE also continues to evolve its services and supports to students in the face of their changing needs. Through it all, the CBE remains committed to its values, students come first, learning is our central purpose, and public education serves the common good. We're happy to take your questions.
Trustee Bukidinovich?
Yes, thank you for that introduction and the report. And it really does give me confidence that we truly have a well-managed school district. And, and I'm proud that at the CBE, we always work with what we get. Trying to understand a little bit in terms of that, what is it that we're getting? So the, I see that there is a table here that shows us, the third last table in this report, and it shows that actual per-student funding is essentially unchanged since the 2022, 23 school year. And in 2022, 23, it was 8,818 actual per-student. I'm curious what the information would be if we went even further back. Has it changed since the 2018, 19 school year, for example? What was the actual per-student funding in the 2018, 19 school year?
So through the chair. Actual per-student funding as calculated by the CBE was $9,054 per student in 2018, 19. For the 2024, 25 budget, the amount was calculated at $8,861, exclusive of the Alberta Teachers Association Collective Agreement Increase. If you include the ATA Collective Agreement Increase, that calculates out to $9,043 per student.
Follow-up, trustee Bukidinovich?
Well, yeah, I just wanted to note that that sounds to me like an actual, not just flat, but an actual decrease in per-student funding since 2018, 19, which is challenging. It's amazing the results that we achieve. I'm just floored with how good our administration is in managing with the funds we get.
Trustees, questions or comments? Trustee Bukidinovich?
The third last table again, it shows what inflation-adjusted funding would look like. What is the starting year for this inflation calculation?
Through the chair. Initially, we began the calculation of the inflation-adjusted per-student amount based on 2016, 17, sorry, 15, 16. But back then, the annual inflation rate was fairly modest, so it was pretty close to even until 2018, 19. And since then, we've seen a divergence between the inflation-adjusted amount and the actual per-student amount.
Trustee Bukidinovich?
This one's more of a comment rather than a question, but in the second last table, I read that the number of schools, uh, that are overflowed should be fewer than five. Uh, yet we currently have thirty-three schools in overflow and forty-seven overflow receiver schools. And in my role as a trustee, I hear from parents in Calgary how difficult and heartbreaking and disruptive it is when cohorts of students are broken up because of the lack of school space. So I don't have a question about this one, but just a comment that I appreciate that the number of schools was decreased, a number of schools in overflow was decreased by one in last quarter from thirty-four to thirty-three. Uh, because truly every decrease in the number of overflow schools makes an incredible positive impact for families in Calgary, so I just wanted to express my gratitude for that statistic.
In talking about capital reserves now, on page ten of twelve, it outlines very clearly the different things that capital reserves are used for, such as uh, new school commissioning, fitting up those new schools that we get and the bunch we hope we're receiving shortly. Uh, modular relocations, our F and F and E repository, and program relocation. And in the matrix, which we appreciate also, I see that the trend is unfavorable. So can you just talk about why is this and how do we replenish our capital reserves so that we can utilize these funds for these important and necessary projects?
So through the chair, maybe I'll start with the second part first and then get to the first part. So the sources of funding for CBE capital reserves are primarily two, uh, and one is very rarely used. So the first one is the sale of CBE-owned properties. So if the CBE owns a piece of property, uh, it disposes of that, it receives proceeds of disposition. Those proceeds of disposition are, um, given to the capital reserve to support future capital, uh, infrastructure needs. The second opportunity is the CBE could make a decision to seek ministerial approval to move dollars from our operating reserve into our capital reserve if we so chose. So those are the two mechanisms. Uh, to my knowledge, we have not asked the minister to support the movement of funds from the operating reserve to the capital reserve. Um, our operating reserves are modest and are often used to support the continuity of operations. Uh, with regard to the trend, uh, when we look at our capital reserve levels, they look reasonable, but they've been heading down, and we know that we're, knock on wood, heading into a period of hopefully more new school construction and the installation of more modular classrooms. All of those things require, um, CBE capital dollars to support the fit-up of those facilities. So when you have a declining balance, although still reasonably healthy, uh, into a situation where you're going to be spending a lot of capital dollars, we believe that trend is a little bit concerning.
Thank you, and I'll just follow up. So given that our schools are so full, um, the disposing of any properties is unlikely because we literally need all of our space. And it would seem to me taking money out of our operating reserves, as you said, which would directly impact classroom operations are not feasible. We're in a bit of a pickle, as it were.
Not through the chair, I'm not sure if that was a question, but yes, it is challenging times given constrained resources and the need to find significant amounts of additional space to support all of the students in the system.
Thank you, trustee Hack.
So I want to dig into this one a little bit more. So I'm looking at page three twelve where it says "Board-funded capital expenditure is expected to be fifty-eight, twenty-eight million, an increase of twenty-seven point eight million from the budget level of thirty-one million." Further on the page, we're looking at the first quarter uh, capital budget report, intachment, four highlights significant variances from the budget. I just want to highlight this is, this is significant. We're talking about a hundred and eighty-nine percent increase to the line item. I understand that we can't budget for or predict the capital reserve, uh, projects. Um, and that's fifteen point three of that. But I'm just wondering, so the money that's being spent or projected to be spent this year within there, what is it being spent on that we weren't able to budget accurately for last May? That twelve million increase above the, above the budget line for non-facility-related projects? And how can we better align this line item to ensure that there are sufficient funds? Because we're hoping for those thirteen-plus schools announced this year, as well as many more in the future to come. I am, I understand we are in a bit of a pickle, and I am concerned about this. I'm just trying to figure out where that spending was based on what we had passed last May.
So, excuse me, through the chair. So let's back up a little bit. So for the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year, uh, we would have budgeted for a certain amount of board-funded non-facility capital. And that includes things like our technology evergreening program, for example, so the program that spends anywhere from ten to fifteen million dollars a year to refresh and renew uh, school-based technology, so desktops, laptops, digital displays, those kinds of things. Uh, it's funding for the maintenance of our technology infrastructure. It's funding for various pieces of equipment that are used by our custodial and maintenance staff, so floor burnishers and polishers and whatnot and so forth. So all of those things are included in budget twenty-three, twenty-four. As the year unfolds, uh, there are various things that can happen related to each of those projects that may result in those projects not getting quite as far as we had anticipated. So while the dollars were approved as part of the budget development process, when we get to the end of the year, they haven't been spent. The projects themselves, however, are still in progress. So we carry the money forward. So it's not a, a new approval, it's just the carryforward of approved dollars from twenty-three, twenty-four into twenty-four, twenty-five. So what you're seeing in the budget variance report when it relates to carryforwards is the carryforward of those various funds into the current school year. So as those projects conclude, the dollars to support that work is carried forward and available. So that's what that is. In terms of, uh, accuracy of forecasting, our challenge is that the budget is prepared in May. Uh, we don't necessarily know with any great deal of certainty what the carryforward balances will be till we get to the year end in August. So we've got those several months in there where we don't know how it's going to end. So when we get to year end, we include that information in Schedule One, Net Assets, of the audited financial statements, and it shows a, I'm going to call it a notional increase to operating capital reserves for the amount that's carried forward. It has to be somewhere, and that's where Alberta Education Guidance says is operating in capital reserves. And then with the presentation of these first quarter budget variance report, we remove that amount, which is what you're seeing reflected here, so that those dollars are available to fund those previously approved projects. And then, of course, for the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, we would have included uh, provisions for funds for the current year projects. And when we get closer to the end of the year, we'll know how well we are doing against those projects and their spending.
Trustee Bukadinevich?
This one's also more of a comment rather than a question, but it, when I look at this, uh, variance report, I see in the last table that already in the first quarter, we have nearly one thousand unfunded students. And when I look, compare the number of students enrolled in the CBE as at the September thirtieth cutoff for funding and the additional number enrolled by the end of the first quarter of this school year. And last year, the two thousand twenty, uh, um, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year, I see we had more than three thousand six hundred unfunded students. So, uh, again, you know, we heard earlier today that CPE students outperformed their peers in Alberta on provincial achievement tests and diploma exams. But I worry about whether we're doing, um, enough to invest in and protect our strong public education system when thousands of students are added to our schools each year after the September thirtieth cutoff, and these additional students are unfunded. So just something I'm, I'm keeping an eye on and something that concerns me.
Trustee Hack?
Thank you. Um, page five of twelve, I'm looking at, um, lunchroom supervision and all the fees that kind of boil out there. Uh, I'm trying to understand the connection between the three here, the favorable variance of zero point six million in fees due to point five million for lunchroom supervision due to increased enrollment. Yes, we saw an increased enrollment. That one kind of makes sense to me. Um, so that's a favorable variance. We collected more fees. Um, why is it listed twice? Once under the first bullet, under unfavorable variance of one point two million in non-certificated salaries and wages and benefits. Um, is it the zero point nine increase in lunchroom supervision fee due to higher enrollment? And then again, under, um, I may have gotten that a little bit backwards. It, but it's listed twice underneath there. Um, I'm just trying to figure out which one was the salaries for the people? And then what was that second category that was an unfavorable variance leading to a higher amount? Page, uh, three of, sorry, five of twelve.
Through the chair. So great question. Um, so there are three, I guess, components to the noon hour supervision program that are reflected in this report. So the first part is fees. I think everybody's aware that our noon hour supervision program is a fee-based program. Strictly speaking, it's a, uh, an optional program. Uh, parents, families do not need to sign up for it, but if their student remains in the school and they're in grade one to six, they are part of the noon supervision program. So when we forecast our budget for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year for noon supervision, we look back to the twenty-three, twenty-four year to see what it looked like. Uh, we don't necessarily base it simply on the enrollment growth that we expect. Uh, and we don't do that because, uh, a large number of the, in students in the program, uh, or sorry, a large number of students in the enrollment growth don't participate in the noon supervision program. They're, they're in grades seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve. So, uh, as we went into this year, what we noticed was that we did see more students, uh, using the noon hour supervision program, and therefore our fee revenue went up by approximately half a million dollars. So that's the revenue side. Offsetting revenue are the expenses, and there are two categories of expenses expenses in the noon hour supervision program. One is the salary and benefit costs associated with the noon hour supervisors. And two is the other stuff that is part of the noon hour supervision program. So what we saw with the increased enrollment is the need for more noon hour supervisors. So you'll see that reflected in the zero point nine million dollar increase in lunchroom supervision. Once again, due to that higher-than-anticipated enrollment in the program, and an additional half-million dollar increase in the other stuff associated with the noon hour supervision program, the zero point five. So when you put it all together, what we saw was a half-million dollar increase in noon hour supervision revenue offset by an approximate one point four million dollar increase in noon hour supervision costs.
Follow-up, trustee Hack?
Sorry, I wasn't clear, because I had lost my spot earlier. I'm just wondering what the services, contract, and supplies are in relation to that. I understand we needed more people to cover that supervision, but what, what are those services, contract, and supplies that were needed extra for the lunchroom supervision?
Through the chair, my understanding is that the noon hour supervision program does include certain other things, and I'm not the expert in that category to deliver the program. It may be, um, certain, um, other supports that are necessary to support all the children uh, gathering in a place, having their lunch, and then moving into the, the playground. And maybe our colleagues from School Improvement have a bit better sense of what those things are.
Through the chair, I'll just jump in. In terms of additional supplies, uh, often we have students who are engaged in various games, different activities, uh, supplies for those spaces that students are in to make sure uh, that all of those elements are looked after. Uh, and certainly there's, if there is a desire for further follow-up, we can provide additional detail.
I'll just follow up with a question from trustee Bukadinevich about the eight hundred and ninety unfunded students, which will grow gradually throughout the year, I assume, um, which equated to a six point one million dollar additional expense, which with simple math, that would mean to me about sixty, uh, teachers to support those students. And you mentioned base budget in your remarks. So what is the impact on the system? Can you just clarify what that actually means?
So once again, I need to back up a little bit. So I know the language "unfunded students" was used. Um, the way the current Alberta government funding methodology works is the base rate that's provided to school jurisdictions is assumed uh, to cover all costs that a school jurisdiction will incur in the course of a school year, including students who come to the system after the enrollment count date at September thirtieth. So, um, it's probably a point of discussion whether that means those students are unfunded. One could argue that they're funded in the overall bucket of money that the CBE receives for the school year. Um, when we develop the budget for a school year, we do make some forecasts around what uh, post-September thirtieth enrollment growth we're likely to see. And we make sure that we provide for that in our resource allocation method, which is the overall school budgets. So that if we do see, um, post-September thirtieth enrollment growth, we have dollars available to flow that out. What's referenced in this report is what the value of eight hundred and ninety students would be had we got funded the same way we do for everybody else. Um, so in this case, the majority of the fund, so back up a little further, when a school receives its RAM for the students and we receive eight hundred and ninety after September thirtieth, divide that by two hundred and fifty-one schools, every school might see one or two, maybe three additional students. That, generally speaking, can be accommodated within their RAM allocation. You add one student to a classroom, you're not adding an additional stu-, uh, teacher, you're not probably adding an additional educational assistant, et cetera, et cetera. In some cases, however, you are. A school may see five, ten, fifteen additional students, in which case you may be in a situation where you need to add another class, split an existing class, something like that. So what that reflects is the overall system impact of adding um, eight hundred and ninety students after that September thirtieth enrollment count date. Keep in mind as well, uh, enrollment growth continues throughout the remainder of the school year. This is as of, uh, the end of November from September thirtieth. So we'll continue to see enrollment growth in December, January, February, all the way to the end of the school year.
Thank you for that clarification. Trustees, any other questions and comments on this report? All right. Next on our agenda is item eight point one, Annual Monitoring of Operational Expectation Eight, Communicating and Engaging with the Public. At the January sixteenth, twenty twenty-five board meeting, trustees had an opportunity to ask questions regarding the report. The report is now on the agenda for the board to consider whether the chief superintendent is in compliance with the provisions of OE eight, communicating and engaging with the public. Let me remind the board that the purpose of considering this report is to satisfy the board that its policy values are being complied with. I would request a trustee bring forward a motion regarding this report. Trustee Close?
Uh, thank you that the Board of Trustees approves that the chief superintendent is in compliance with the provisions of OE eight, uh, communicating and engaging with the public.
Thank you. Do trustees have any questions about the motion? The motion on the floor is that the Board of Trustees approves that the chief superintendent is in compliance with provisions of OE eight, communicating and engaging with the public. Trustee Close, would you please open debate?
Uh, thank you. Um, the policy values in this, uh, OE, um, of working with our communities um, and communicating and working with our communities is a critical component to building uh, relationships that support student success in the CBE and public education as a whole. I think the Board of Trustees can easily say that we're satisfied that our policy values of, of, that are identified in this uh, policy and the indicators of success, uh, were complied with.
Thank you. Are there any trustees that wish to enter first round of debate? Are there any trustees that wish to enter second round of debate? Trustee Bukadinevich?
Well, yes, I, I, um, intend to vote in favor of the motion, and I, um, I know, first of all, this report speaks to, to, um, to why I, I feel like we should be in favor of, of, of the motion. But in addition, anecdotally, I've seen over and over, um, real efforts on the ground at schools with parents and guardians where I see CBE- where I see CBE is engaging with, with the parent community, listening to the parent and community where possible, addressing, and always addressing concerns, whether where possible by changing something and where not, where it is impossible to change something by, by helping parents understand that sometimes with, with difficult choices, one choice kind of is the one that is the most efficient, effective, or, or appropriate. So I'm just, I see over and over that, that this policy is being supported on the ground.
Trustee Dennis.
Thank you, Chair. So I also will be voting in favor of this motion. I just want to highlight one thing, I guess, in particular, and it's a, it's a tool that's really helpful for trustees to have at our disposable, at our disposal when community members reach out to us and they have, you know, something that they're concerned about. It is really lovely to have this tool around the concerns and complaints process. And, you know, our expectations on this are high. It's a tool that we use a lot, and our expectations around responsiveness are high. When we say ninety percent of concerns and complaints received at the area and system level are responded to within the stated timeframes as outlined in AR five zero zero seven, and one hundred percent of concerns and complaints received were responded to within those expectations. That does a lot in terms of building public trust and public confidence and also responding to families when, you know, when they have something that they, a matter that they would like to be addressed and having that availability to advance their concern if they need to. So again, we'll be voting in favor, but wanted to highlight that piece in particular.
Thank you. Are there any other trustees wishing to enter second round of debate? Trustee Close, do you wish to close debate?
No, no, thank you.
Thank you, I'll call the question. Those in favor of the motion? That is carried unanimously, thank you. Are there any further motions on this report? Trustee Close.
Now this'll explain all. The Board of Trustees commends the chief superintendent for exemplary performance in relation to strategic two-way dialogue between the organization and its communities while conducting the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-seven education plan engagement.
Do trustees have any questions about the motion? The motion on the floor is that the Board of Trustees commends the chief superintendent for exemplary performance in relation to strategic two-way dialogue between the organization and its communities while conducting the twenty twenty-four to twenty-seven engagement plan engagement. Trustee Close, would you please open debate?
Absolutely. And then just from a technicality, perhaps I did not do it justice with the compliance motion, but usually it's on consent. And one of the reasons, if we want to put forward a motion to do a commendation, then we also have to approve the, the report is actually in compliance, which we have done. I'm delighted to bring this forward to commend the chief superintendent for exemplary performance in relation to the, the development of the education plan, as noted in the report, and also as experienced ourselves with some of the stakeholder engagement. This was a comprehensive engagement that probably is the first time that we have seen such high levels of, of engagement with all stakeholders. And one of the things that is, is exemplary, in my opinion, is that ninety-six percent of other people that were engaged in that engagement were satisfied with this opportunity. Nine thousand community members, that's pretty astonishing and reflecting the diverse voices. And, and what I am particularly intrigued in and excited about is the strengthening of relationships that we are seeing, that the CBE is, is doing with all members of our community. And I think that's what public education is all about, not just in communicating and, and having conversations, but deliberately engaging people to reflect their diverse voices within our school system. I'll leave it there for my other colleagues to weigh in.
Thank you, trustee Close. Are there any trustees that wish to enter first round of debate? Trustee May?
Thank you. I appreciate this commendation notion moving forward, I'm in support of it. I really do appreciate the intentional work from the very beginning that influenced how this engagement was conducted. There were so many opportunities for all stakeholders to be consulted and offer feedback. These included partners that may not directly link to K to twelve education, but they truly are important factors in future student success. And beyond simply engaging these partners, they strengthened condition, our connections, initiated conversations, and allowed considerations of context. The results of meaningfully engaging externally and internally are this education plan. I see a reflection of system priorities, a demonstration of deep understanding of who each and every student is and what actions and supports drive our system.
Thank you. Trustee Hack.
I will just add, I love, I love comprehensive engagement, it truly is. It does take effort and vision to bring together community, education, and families all together to pull off such a comprehensive plan. It had meaningful dialogue for everyone who was involved, and I've heard many times about how they were engaged through different means and ways. And you had such a short time since being hired by the board in March to be able to pull off exemplary performance in this. Thank you.
Any other trustees for first round? Trustee Bukidinovich?
Community is an important part of public schools. It's an important part of what makes the Calgary Board of Education valued by families and, and by the city, by the, are the city that we live in. And I have actually been stopped several times, this in the past few months as a trustee, by a community member, not necessarily even people who have kids in the CBE system, but they have, they're a stakeholder in some way, either they're with industry or they're with a not-for-profit organization. And they say, I feel a strong connection with the Calgary Board of Education and I, I was, participated in the engagement and I was, I'm grateful for that opportunity. And so that's another piece that I just wanted to share and why we're voting in favor of this as an exemplary performance of the Calgary Board of Education because community is vital to, to what we do. Community is vital to why, why people love us, why people love CBE for their kids. And the community was strengthened through this, so thank you.
Thank you. And I might add that it really was exemplary, and I'm glad I got to live it firsthand. Like nine thousand engagements, that is hugely significant tonight in one of the community sessions. And it was full and packed and people talking and sharing and highly organized with post-its and chart papers. Like it really was an act of engagement. So absolutely, thank you for all of the work on that.
Trustee Dennis?
Thank you. So many great comments by my colleagues, and I won't repeat much of what they said, but really it was a pleasure as a trustee to be able to participate and listen in on so many of those engagements. In particular, I found, you know, some sort of the partners or industry sort of engagements to be very interesting. Great to have their voice at the table and, and hear what their thoughts. And, you know, really dreams are around public education and in the CBE in particular, and how proud they are to be associated with an organization such as this. So thank you for, to everyone who had a hand in pulling that engagement together and compiling the many, many comments that came back and developing it into an education plan that makes sense for us.
Thank you. I think we've covered everyone on first round. Anyone wishing to enter second round of debate? Thank you. A trustee Close, do you wish to close debate?
Just to acknowledge the wonderful comments and, and in the debate from my colleagues and just to close with, you know, student success is definitely community success, and we need the community to support our students. And, and it's not just in the engagement process that we've developed these relationships to build a, a strong public education system, but we've also had the ability to develop an education plan that will serve us well going forward because people are engaged in the conversations of what students need and, and building those connections with community in such a lovely and important, vital way. So thank you all for obviously supporting this commendation, and it is delightful to be able to take the time to do that today, to do this today.
Thank you, trustee Close. I'll call the question, those in favor of the motion? That is carried unanimously. That brings us to the consent agenda of our meeting. All items not removed from the consent agenda will be deemed to be approved with the agenda. This concludes the public portion of today's agenda. The board has one legal, two labor, two land, and four strategic planning matters to deal with in private. I would like to thank all of you who joined us for this meeting. And our next public board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, February eleventh, twenty twenty-five.